I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners for March 16th, 2016 to order. Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Nine present, three absent.
Okay, let the record show that we have Commissioners Fisher, McDonough, and Anderson absent this evening from the proceedings. So with that, I'll ask Commissioner Henderson to lead us in a prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night. We make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
At this point, I would make the call for any public comment on items that are on tonight's
agenda. Is there anyone wishing to give public comment on an agenda item tonight? Please come and state your name and address and what the agenda item is you're speaking on, sir.
My name's Dan O'Neil. Are we speaking on it now or just registering to speak on it?
Speaking on it right now. It's on the agenda.
I wanted to give comment on the airport, but quite frankly, I thought it has more time to organize my thoughts, so maybe I should let this gentleman go first.
Sorry.
All over Bandarau, 2601 Grand Avenue. Thank you. Reference Section 2 Consent Agenda B Communications Number 1316, Communication 16-110. Requesting the Council of Commissioners to establish rules and procedures to call for, authorize, recognize, community councils to advise the Council of Commissioners. In a recent article in the Montana Standard, the Butte Silver Bow CEO was quoted as saying, "It is his, the executive branch's responsibility to bring forth initiatives." That is most certainly correct, but in a democracy, it is not his job, not the job of the executive branch, to vet those initiatives with the public once introduced. That is your job, council. That is your job, the legislative branch. Your responsibility is stipulated under the powers and duties of the Council of Commissioners and the Butte Silver Bow City-County Charter. That is all that I and the 89% of the 500 people that I have talked to, and most probably 84 to 94% of the people of the greater community, with a 95% confidence factor in that estimate, are asking for, is for this Council of Commissioners to do your job in the manner stipulated in the Butte Silver Bow City-County Charter. In a democracy, if you truly want to ascertain what is the unbiased opinion of the people, it does not really seem to be logical to ask the same branch of government to vet it as is bringing it forward. Case in point, Consent Agenda, Section 4, Ordinance and Resolutions Final Reading, Judiciary Committee Meeting, Section 3, Resolution 16-8, to put a 7.2 or an 8.5 million-dollar obligation issue bond on the ballot for a recreational complex and park approving $350,000 annually to operate and maintain said complex. This is a major policy decision. Did the Council of Commissioners call for legislative branch public listening sessions or request that an aquatics recreational facility community council be called for prior to the drafting and approving of the resolution phase so it would be properly vetted with the public? By the way, that $500,000 already committed by the CEO is actually, as the man said, public monies. There is a smarter way to spend that 500K. If it can be used to fund a 56-day water park, it could also be used to establish a revolving matching funds program for participants in neighborhoods and blocks to fund SIDs to use for neighborhood infrastructure improvements. To commit or not to commit these funds is a separate, major legislative policy determination and should be dealt with and handled accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. Other public comment? Seeing none, move to the approval of the minutes of the February 22nd, 2016 special meeting and the regular meeting from March 2nd and the other special meeting on March 5th, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes of the special meeting, February 22nd, 2016, regular meeting, March 2nd, 2016, and the special meeting occurring on March 5th, 2016.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No items that are to be addressed that aren't on the agenda, so we'll move into the Chief Executive report, starting with, I just came from the friendly Sons of St. Patrick celebration down at the Front Street Station. Note to council scheduling, never schedule a meeting when it's within a day or two of St. Patrick's Day again. But I would like to applaud Commissioner Shaw for rounding up nine of the 12 this evening for what we have as a full docket, full of business. I would announce, this is kind of a soft announcement because we're awaiting the formal announcement via press release from the Montana DNRC, but we received notification this week that last year Butte was the runner-up for the Tree City of the Year Award for the state of Montana. This year, we won it, and so we will be announced as such. There's $10,000 in funds that will go towards the planting of trees. This also marks 27 consecutive years that Butte Silver Bow has been a certified Tree City USA, so good news on the tree front as we roll forward with that. And I believe the press release, once it comes, will have a confirmed date when the governor will be coming here to honor us with that distinguished award. Just so folks know, tomorrow is the parade. We changed the route this year, or the route was changed this year rather than the old route. It's going to start on East Granite Street down by Butterfly Park, proceeding west to Montana Street, then south to Park Street, and then west back on Park Street to Arizona. It's a simpler, fairly shorter route, and the parade will start at noon. And there's also some, there will be no parking on the parade route for the safety of the spectators and the people in the parade, and that's just through the parade, and then things will open back up again. So that is at noon tomorrow. Monday, at the Mining City Center at 6:30, I was asked to announce that that will be the, if there were folks here, I think there were several commissioners that were part of the January 19th Public Forum that was hosted by the Restore Creek Coalition. This, on Monday night, the 21st of March at 6:30, will be the first of two public visioning sessions, I believe they're calling them, where folks are going to be facilitated to give their vision and ideas for what they want to see in the restored Silver Bow Creek corridor from Texas Avenue to the confluence with Blacktail Creek. So that is Monday at 6:30. I'd urge your attendance at that. Also, on the environmental front, next Tuesday, the 22nd, is World Water Day. It's a worldwide day in which we're all urged, it came from a United Nations proclamation back in the early 1990s to draw attention to water conservation, and on that day, I'll be sending out details. We're still working on exactly what they are. We will be announcing that I have signed Butte up for the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. It's a friendly competition with cities, among cities across the United States where citizens are urged to pledge to conserve specific ways and amounts of water, and whatever communities in a couple of different categories have the highest percentage of citizens, win the award, and there's a lot of prizes ranging from a new car to a bunch of different, a bunch of different eco-friendly type prizes that citizens can win for signing up for the pledge. So World Water Day next Tuesday, and we're likely to have some sort of a public opening and viewing of our new water treatment plant out at Basin Creek. So stay tuned for additional details on that. We was asked to also announce on behalf of the Food Bank and Backpack Program that they have to send food home with the kids on the weekends and the holidays and summertime for our kids in need. The Empty Bowls fundraiser is coming up on April 6th at the Civic Center, and they want a full house, and so they still have tickets available. Those are being, you can obtain a ticket from the Food Bank or from Poor Roth &amp; Robinson or from contacting Darla Newman, Judge Newman's wife. And lastly, if you recall, last week, at the Restore Creek Coalition gave a presentation, actually Joe Griffin gave a presentation on behalf of the Restore Creek Coalition, and he mentioned a couple of times a gentleman by the name of Martin Hestmark from Regional EPA out of Denver. Today, there were some consent decree meetings in town, and Mr. Hestmark happens to be here, and so he's in the audience, and just to kind of keep things official when we get into the consent agenda, I know Commissioner Palmer is going to segregate that. So Mr. Hestmark, who is the Assistant Regional Administrator of the Ecosystems Protection and Remediation Division out of the Region 8 Denver office, would like to address the council and introduce himself, so that is also on this evening's agenda. And with that, I think we'll conclude the report to the council on our county business and move into our Section 1 bid openings, public hearings, and presentations. County Attorney, do we have proof of publication?
On 16-69. Sorry. On 16-69, thank you, there is proof of publication and appears to be in order.
Okay, do you care to tell us on the rest of them so you only have to do it once?
Sure, that'd be great. 16-79, there's also proof of publication that appears to be in order, and 16-85, there is proof of publication and that also appears to be in order.
All right, very good. For the public record, Deputy County Attorney Kelly Feivey is sitting in for County Attorney Joyce this evening. So number one, Communication 16-69, Patsy Coates, Property Specialist, requesting Council of Commissioners concur with the request to hold a bid opening on March 16th regarding the title in lien search of the 2016 tax deed process. Commissioner Shaw, or, oh, there you are. I didn't, I saw you in the back, I didn't see you come up. Patsy.
Chief Executive, Mr. Vincent, and council members, may I please open the two sealed bids I received for title on lien search? Okay, the first bid I received was from Summit Valley Title Company, and their bid amount is $250 per tax parcel.
Okay.
The second bid I received is from Montana Abstract and Title Company, and their bid is $200 per parcel.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I would ask that these two proposals be referred back to Patsy Coates. She will remain in the audience until I come to the consent agenda, and we will review it at that time, and she can give us her recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication 16-79, bid opening, Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director with the Butte Silver Bow Planning Board, requesting Council of Commissioners concur with the request to hold a bid opening tonight regarding the landscaping project using CTEP funds. Ms. Casey?
Mr. Chief Executive, Council of Commissioners, this is our landscaping gateway project that we are using CTEP funds for. This will create a gateway entrance at the corner of Utah and Front Street, and then various trees and benches and landscaping improvements in the uptown Butte area, as well as some crosswalk improvements. So the first bid is from Tobanus Construction Company here in Butte.
There is a bid bond for the first bid, and it represents 10%, and it appears to be in order.
All right, very good.
Mr. Chief Executive, Council of Commissioners, the base bid on this project is $146,038.04. Again, the base bid is $146,038.04. This bid package also did have some add alternates. The bid for add alternate one is $15,300. The bid for add alternate number two is $19,591. The bid for add alternate number three is $15,300. The bid for add alternate number five is $19,5, I'm sorry, for, add alternate number four is $19,591. And the bid for add alternate number five is $2,274.50.
Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, Lori, could you tell us the engineer's estimate on these?
Commissioner Henderson, Chief Executive Mitch Mahilevich with Pioneer Technical Services. Again, as Lori explained, the bids were broken out into the base bid and five add alternates. The engineer's estimate for the base bid was $117,312.80. Add alternate bid number one, the total cost was $9,000. That's 9,000,000. For add alternate number two, the total bid was $11,700. For add alternate number three, the total bid was $9,000. That's 9,000,000. For add alternate bid number four, the total bid was $11,700. That's 117,000. And for add alternate bid number five, the total bid was $4,975. That's 4,975.
Thank you. Thanks, Mitch. Lori?
The second bid we have received is from Walsh Construction here in Butte.
Mitch? Insurance. Clicked on there, maybe?
On this one, there appears to be a bid bond representing 10% of the total amount, and it appears to be in order.
The base bid for this project is $153,121. The amount for add alternate number one is $17,500. The amount for add alternate number two is $22,750. The add alternate for number three is $17,500. The add alternate number four is $22,750. And the add alternate number five is $6,625.
Very good. Any questions? Seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This time, I would move that we refer the bids back to the Planning Department and the Public Works Department and to come back to this body with their recommendations.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have public hearing, Communication 16-85, Jeffrey L. Miller, Director of Butte Silver Bow Fire Services, requesting council schedule a public hearing for March 16th, 2016 for the purpose of receiving public comment on a proposed amendment to the Butte Silver Bow Fire Department's fiscal year 2015-16 budget. Chief Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, for the record, my name is Jeff Miller, Director of Fire Services. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to receive public comment on a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2015-2016 Butte Silver Bow Fire Department budget. It would be to consider, if approved, it would be to consider a resolution that would amend the budget and create budget authority for the receipt of unanticipated revenue for the fire department budget. The source of the, the source of the unanticipated revenue is Department of Natural, Montana Department of Natural Resource and Conservation. It's wildfire deployment revenue for, from deployment for wildfires from last summer. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Seeing none, having determined that there was proper public notice for this public hearing, I will open the public hearing. Are there any proponents? Any proponents for amending Fire Department's budget? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Are there any opponents to the budget amendments? Final call for either? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Presentation, Communication 16-80, Jenny Chambers, Remediation Division Administrator from the Montana Department of Environmental Quality, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize time on March 16th for an update presentation on the Montana Pole and Treating Plant site. Ms. Chambers?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive and Council of Commissions. For record again, my name is Jenny Chambers, C-H-A-M-B-E-R-S. I am the Division Administrator for the Waste Management and Remediation Division at the Department of Environmental Quality. I just wanted to thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to present to you this evening regarding Montana Pole. Again, the focus of the presentation will be specifically on the Montana Pole Federal Superfund site, but we have folks here that could address questions, not only on Montana Pole, but possibly other superfund-related questions, if you want to maybe see if there's additional questions you may have or information that you might want to have us do a follow-up on later on if needed. This is a state lead site, so it is a federal NPL site, but the state cash-out settlement was for DEQ to manage the facility, but that's in collaboration with EPA. I'd like to provide some introductions to my team that's here and also some of the EPA staff. The project manager is Lisa DeWitt. Also have Amy Reynolds, who's our risk assessor. Dave Bowers is a project management also at the team. Tom Stoops is the bureau chief of the Federal Superfund Bureau, and then Colin McCoy is our professional engineer, and he works for Tetra Tech. For EPA, since this is a collaborative project, the project manager for EPA is Nikia Green. His manager and supervisor of remediation in the Montana office is Joe Verenka. And then, as Chief Executive indicated, Martin Hestmark is also here with us from Region 8 in Denver. Do you have a handout we'd like to present? If I could pass that out to the commission? And then I'd like to turn over to Lisa DeWitt to get into more specifics on the presentation, so thank you.
So, Mr. Chief Executive and Commissioners, good evening. My name is Lisa DeWitt, and I work for the Department of Environmental Quality out of Helena, Montana, and I'm the manager for the state of the Montana Pole and Treating Plant. And tonight, we'd like to give you just a little presentation about a little of the history of the Montana Pole and Treating Plant, what our current plans are conceptually with the offload and closure of the land treatment unit, and then we can provide a little information to hopefully provide some information to you about the protectiveness at the site at the closure of the soil's remedy. The Montana Pole and Treating Plant is located in southwestern portion of Butte, as many of you know, off of Greenwood Avenue. A portion of the site is A portion of the site is to the north of the interstate along Silver Bow Creek, and the interstate intersects that. And Montana Pole operated as a wood treating facility from the mid-'40s to the mid-'80s. And during most of this time, they used a solution of about 5% pentachlorophenol with petroleum oil to treat and preserve the wood. In March of '83, a local citizen filed a complaint about oil leaking into the creek. And at that time, the soils and the waters were sampled, and they noted the presence of pentachlorophenol, polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which we call PAHs for the obvious reason that that's a mouthful. And they also noted that there were dioxins and furans in that as well. In '93, the Record of Decision was finalized, and this required excavation and onsite biological treatment of this contaminated soils, long-term operation of groundwater treatment system, and in-situ treatment of the soils that remain inaccessible, primarily those that remain underneath the interstate. So with our remedy, we basically have got two treatments. We have a treatment of the groundwater and the treatment of the soils. In the groundwater treatment, we recover groundwater through two trenches, which are basically long horizontal wells down in the groundwater. They're conveniently called the near creek recovery trench and the near highway recovery trench. These groundwaters are transported to our water treatment plant where they're treated with carbon, they meet the Record of Decision cleanup levels, and the discharge goes back out to Silver Bow Creek. Throughout the life of the facility, we have removed approximately 60,000 gallons of contaminated oil from the groundwater. There are no longer seeps of oil along the creek, and in fact, there's a lot of terrestrial life back along the tree, creek, both from the cleanup here as well as through the greater Butte area. We have not had any product, though, since about 2009, so we don't see any more remaining oil coming through the treatment system. We feel that this is a great sign of progress toward cleanup. Currently, at our treatment system, we run at a constant rate of approximately 270 gallons a minute, and we run through about 175 million gallons of water a year. This is going to continue on for some time until we reach the Record of Decision cleanup level, and we anticipate the life of that to be at least about another 30 years. And in addition, as you can see in some of your notes, between '93 and about 2003, the overall size of the groundwater contamination has decreased by over 40%. So we're really making some really good progress there. The other portion of the cleanup that is probably of more interest to you tonight is the soils cleanup. The portion of the soils cleanup that, where we have done things is to excavate the contaminated soils, and over 200,000 yards of the contaminated soils were excavated and treated onsite in the land treatment unit. Previously, to this point in time, about 200, well, about 147,000, more or less, of contaminated soils were treated and were placed back generally in the areas from which they were dug up. Those soils, they met the pentachlorophenol and the PH cleanup levels. They did not necessarily meet the dioxin cleanup levels at that time. Where we are right now, we are down to the last portion of treated soils on the land treatment unit, and they've been determined to meet the pentachlorophenol and the PH cleanup levels. Dioxins are much harder to treat, and the, we, these soils, our plan is to place them along with the other soils that have already been placed back in the land treatment, well, in the area from which they originally were excavated. So our final remedy, it will entail capping this to eliminate exposure, and then institutional controls to maintain protectiveness. And at this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Colin McCoy from Tetra Tech, who can describe to you the plans that we have currently to close out the land treatment unit.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Colin McCoy. I'm an engineer with Tetra Tech here in technical support of DEQ. I'm here to basically design the, the offload of these soils from the LTU. And so basically, if you'll refer to the figure that you have in there, what we're planning on doing is moving the soil from the LTU treatment area over to the area where the soils originally came from. There, they'd be capped. We've recently mapped the floodplain through the area, which does cross the Montana Pole site, and so part of the design would carry the floodwaters through the site without contacting any of the treated soils. And the soils, after they're moved, they'll be capped with an engineered cap over there, and you, we don't quite know the end use of the property yet, but we will design it to what is needed. We're also designing our stormwater controls appropriately for the site. The run-on around the site, run-on that comes from offsite will be routed through clean channels through the site, and any stormwater that lands on the site in the areas of the treated soils will be kept on the site to prevent contamination from leaving the site. So, in a nutshell, we're just taking the soils from the LTU area, moving them to their original location, making sure that no water will contact them, and then we'll be disposing of all of the liners and leachate collection systems and everything from the LTU as hazardous waste.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Along with all of that, we have been working with Butte Silver Bow Planning to try to make sure that whatever we leave for the site remains in a as flat as possible area for potential reuse by Butte Silver Bow as a Record of Decision envision that that property at the completion of the cleanup would be turned over to Butte Silver Bow for their use. And the use would be with some restrictions to ensure protectiveness of the remedy and, and reduce exposure. And to address some of the exposure issues, I would like to introduce Amy Reynolds of the Department of Environmental Quality.
Mr. Chief Executive and Council of Commissioners, I'm Amy Reynolds. I'm Restoration and Mediation Manager for the Montana Department of Environmental Quality, and I've been tasked to assist with the finalization of the, of the remedy by evaluating whether the cleanup levels and the remedy are still protected by today's standards, since it's a very old Record of Decision. And, and part of that evaluation will be if we aren't meeting protective cleanup levels, say for dioxins and furans, are, are we designing a remedy that is going to cut off all exposure to those contaminants so that, say, direct contact would not be possible, or stormwater runoff would not be possible? Because if there's no exposure there, there's also no risk. So I'm, I'm assisting with that. And a couple of things we're looking at, stormwater is one of them, and also, we want to make sure that the cap is engineered so that nothing like deep-root plants or things like that can, can interfere with the cap and make it unprotected, because if it's not, if it's not a competent cap, it won't be protected. So we also may be looking at some analysis of some creek sediments and making sure that, that those sediments have not been impacted. And a part of the cap maintenance will be ongoing operation and maintenance and inspections, and that's actually going to be really facilitated at this site because we have the water treatment plant running. So we have regular visits to the site, and anything that might happen to the cap will be noted right away. So with that, I'll, I'll leave you, and if you have any questions, we're here.
Lisa?
And the last thing I would go to say, along with Ms. Reynolds' comments on protectiveness, we are currently in the process of conducting a five-year review at this facility, which will also take a look at the protectiveness of the remedy and ensure that things are operating as intended. So at this point, if the Commissioners or Mr. Chief Executive, if you have questions, I would be happy to attempt to answer them or direct them to the appropriate person who could provide the answer if possible.
Ms. Whit, when would the, when's the plan for the five-year review to be completed and released?
The five-year review should be completed by the end of June.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Whit and the other staff? Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Lisa, so where are we right now? How much longer before it's turned over to Butte Silver Bow, do you think?
Commissioner Palmer, at this point in time, we are in the process of, as Mr. McCoy had told you, putting together the conceptual design for the closure of the land treatment unit. So this is going to be a little bit of your long-winded answer, but we are hoping to be able to have that all put together and out for bid by early summer. So God willing, that we would be getting started on moving dirt towards probably fall. So I guess with that, either late this year or sometime next year, depending on how long that all takes.
You have a follow-up, sir?
Thank you. Just as a follow-up, or another question, actually, you know, it's been a year or two, you know, time flies when you've been at this so long, but recently, Metro Sewer, they were doing some work there and did some de-watering, and it created a problem across the way at your site. Is that an ongoing concern, or is it, was it a one-time deal?
Commissioner Palmer, that is an ongoing concern while the construction is going on at the wastewater treatment plant. With that said, we have, did a lot of evaluation at the time, gosh, it's been maybe five years ago now. But a lot of modeling was done, a lot of other evaluations were done, and it was determined that by increasing the extraction rate at the Montana Pole and Treating Plant, which we are currently doing right now, that that would mitigate the potential of additional impacts encountered by the de-watering done at the wastewater treatment plant. Since they are currently doing de-watering there right now with their ongoing construction, they are doing some monitoring of the groundwater there, and at Montana Pole, we have ramped up our groundwater pumping pretty much as high as we can, and we are not necessarily seeing additional impacts heading towards the wastewater treatment plant, so we believe that we have that mitigated. To the best of my knowledge, their de-watering is supposed to be done about the first of May, and I don't believe there will be additional construction de-watering, so we should be past that at that point.
On that too, I would say that because of that concern that you bring up, we, we incorporated a design on the new wastewater treatment plant that would make it to where we didn't have to de-water to do the maintenance that had required that in the past, and it was directly related to protecting the remedy at the Montana Pole plant, and as a result, Governor Bullock and working with the DEQ staff and, and our, our staff were able to, to get about, I believe it was a $4.5 million reduction on the cost of the construction of that plant to our ratepayers, so if you recall that. Commissioner Palmer?
I guess sort of as a follow-up to this is the groundwater. Is there any threat of contaminated groundwater coming from the pole plant and getting in the creek? And if there is, is there any long-term maintenance solution to this?
Commissioner Palmer, thank you for that question. At this current time, I do not believe that there is necessarily a threat of the water from, with contaminant from Montana Pole reaching the creek. With that, we confirm that by annual sampling that we conduct. We sample the effluent that comes out of our treatment system that goes into Silver Bow Creek as well. At this point in time, we envision that the water treatment is going to go on for a minimum of another 30 years, and that will continue until we can be sure that it will not contaminate Silver Bow Creek. That is really one of our prime objectives.
The questions, Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I guess, no, Lisa, I guess I'm more interested in the maintenance plan, because apparently the maintenance plan is going to be something that Butte Silver Bow is going to be doing. I guess, is this, is the funding for the maintenance plan, is that going to be included? Or where's that funding going to come from?
Commissioner Sorge, thank you for that question. The funding for the maintenance plan, I believe, was partially envisioned as part of the settlement agreement back in '93. At that time, Butte Silver Bow was awarded $230,000 for implementation of institutional controls at this site. I would assume that that had been deposited in an interest-bearing account at that time, so that would help offset other costs. And as Ms. Chambers, or and Ms. Reynolds had said too, as we will have an ongoing water treatment system, I would envision that the Department of Environmental Quality, through its contractors and the operator at the wastewater treatment plant, would also facilitate the operations and maintenance of that remedy as long as that was there. It would help offset any other additional costs.
Thank you. Commissioner Foley?
Thank you. Lisa, thank you for coming tonight. I guess, just to give you some feeling of this council, and I guess I can't speak for everyone, we had a lengthy discussion in this council, and we had a lengthy review of the moving of our county shops. This was selected through the review as probably the top spot, but I think the majority of the members of this council rejected that, and we have moved forward with another location, which, listening to your time schedule, it probably wouldn't have worked out anyway. However, the concerns of this council was, you know, the safety of this site. And I guess, as a Commissioner of that district, and even if I'm not a Commissioner in that district, I think there is concerns still that is, there's been enough doubt that's been thrown out there by individuals in the community, and I'm not going to get into that tonight, but, you know, I, I realize that you will say that they've met the standards. I guess the question is, if the contaminants are still inside, is it a safe site? No matter what type of, you know, future use of that land that we may have. So I don't know if you could address that in general tonight? And I guess the, the concerns that we had is that down the road, Butte Silver Bow is to take this site, are we the liable party then? If something were to go wrong, if something, problems were to arise in the future? And so that's the thinking, I guess, in general, what the discussion was about a month or so ago when we, we talked about this.
Commissioner Foley, thank you. I will address part of that and will then turn to my colleagues if they have any additional information that they would like to provide. Our purpose here is to design a protective remedy, so to leave it safe for the intended use. Now with that said, it is safe as long as that remedy remains in place. So with the cap system, as long as that cap is not broken into, I would envision we would have some sort of a soils management plan in place as part of the operations and maintenance that would discuss that if something, say a utility corridor had to go through, that would describe how those soils were meant to be managed and how the remedy would be put back in place. My estimation would be if that remained that way, that should be a protective site. Would anyone else like to?
Follow-up, Commissioner Foley?
Thank you. I guess what I'm getting to as well is that if the time comes in place where you will offer this property to Butte Silver Bow, will you offer assurances to this, this body that it is safe, and if there are problems in the future, it's not our liability? I guess that's the biggest thing that we are, are concerned about. And I, and I guess I'm speaking without even going to Mr. Cecil, who has assured us that that would be the case of this local government, that that's something that I like to hear from you and also DEQ.
Okay, I think I'll let Jenny Chambers address that.
Commissioner Foley, members of the council, commission, yeah, I don't know if we could provide the assurances, but I believe that we would work very closely with Butte Silver Bow County as far as what is needed to, to provide that level of assurance, whether it's an operation of maintenance plan, whether it's helping us collaborate on what the institutional controls would be to maintain the protectiveness of the remedy, and then what would need to be managed long-term. So we, we will build and leave the site that would be protective based upon that, in, in land use. But then I think together, we would have to work on what are the management of those activities of whatever that land is left for, on how that would be protective. So, you know, not, not impacting the cap, what the soil management would be of the site, what legally we could put into any assurances that are needed from some kind of agreement prior to transferring that property over to, to the, to Butte Silver Bow County in a, in a collaborative fashion based upon what we can do and what we can balance from the, the inland use. There's a lot still to be determined, so that's what's kind of hard to say, but I think we could collectively do that. I mean, this, this county is very familiar with issues, controls, management of ICs, protectiveness of remedy, so I'm definitely optimistic that we can get there and definitely can get there for, for the site at Montana. can get there for the site at Montana Pole.
Commissioner Perdue Dolan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you for this presentation, appreciate it. Do you feel you've had enough interaction with the residents who live alongside, across from, just with Montana Pole, and with the residents so far and before it's handed over to Butte Silver Bow?
Madam Commissioner, in talking to the residents, I would say they would always want to have more communication. With that said, I believe, from my own point of view, that I know many of them personally, and I do stop in when I am down there to try to keep them informed, as I believe that they are my most important constituents. They are the people closest to the site. I guess that's sort of a qualified answer. I do stop in frequently, we do talk to them. We haven't really had a newsletter or a fact sheet go out for a little while, we're probably remiss in that, but for where we are and trying to figure out where to go forward, there wasn't a whole lot new to report. So, does that answer your question, although insufficiently?
Commissioner Perdue Dolan?
What, I guess my biggest question is, what is their biggest question right now? I know it's been going on for years, but right now, what is their biggest question and concern today?
Madam Commissioner, their biggest question, for what I have heard from them, is why is this not moving yet? Why are you not done? And we are at the point now of being able to, once we can figure out what this should be, to be able to move forward and get that completed.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I want to thank Jenny and Lisa for coming tonight and keeping this dialogue open, because when we just decided not to choose that site, obviously it's still there, and I know that if the best-case scenario is that it's used for some good use without, you know, doing any kind of tampering with the caps and your other, the area out there in general. But I guess my question is more of a rhetorical question, I suppose, but if the county did not want this land, what are your plans? What would be the DEQ's plans, let's say? I did go to some idea sessions, where we sat down and we put our thoughts together to think of ideas for using the land in general, so I just wanted to put that out to you folks.
Yeah. Madam Commissioner, thank you very much for that question. Should it turn out to be that Butte Silver Bow did not want to take that property as envisioned in the rod, DEQ would proceed ahead to provide a protective remedy, and I believe that we would move ahead with the cap, likely with a vegetative cover, and would be looking for another productive use for that property, whether it is something, and I'm grasping here, whether another state agency would need that property, whether it would be open space. I know that the Boulevard neighborhood has requested that the area directly to the south of them, on the other side of the tracks, be a park. I think we would try very hard to honor that for them, but I believe we would try to find another beneficial use for some property, property purpose, yeah.
Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, excuse me, Lisa, thanks for the presentation. I wish we'd had this quite some time ago, this presentation, so we could follow up on it, because we were making decisions there. We have, what would you call them? Some engineers and such watchdogs in the environmental here that continuously email us and tell us about things that are happening, and it's kind of a disadvantage for somebody like me, because I'm not educated in something like that. So I, you know, I kind of just pass it along and try to figure out, in listening to the people that are environmental people and that, and come, you know, telling us not to move fast and that, it kind of surprises me that the DEQ all of a sudden will come down here to a meeting when we have questioned this pole plant for years. And we didn't get any response as far as communication to work with this, and it's awful confusing that now all of a sudden, we're moving at this rapid pace and even like our other remediation. And so I just wanted to say, it's pretty confusing for, at least for me as a commissioner, because I don't, I don't quite understand how all of a sudden DEQ shows up with this presentation and such, when this should have been all the time keeping us advised, because we as commissioners get calls from everybody in that area and that are very concerned. We also get it from, like I said, the environmental watchdogs who are saying that this is not clean, and they have done their tests and so on and so forth. And then, how big a factor does EPA play into this too?
Commissioner Henderson, thank you for your comments. And my apologies that we were not here sooner to discuss this with you. I do know we have been working with Butte Silver Bow Planning Department, had been here a while back, but I know it's hard to reach everybody, and I would offer in the future, if you need more information, please call, we will do our best to get here as best we can within our schedules. To address your question on how closely we work with EPA, I believe that my EPA counterpart, Nikia Green, and I work very closely together on this. I perceive it to be a team project, even though this is a state lead. So any decisions that are made, EPA is definitely involved in that. Does that adequately address your question? I'm happy to call on Mr. Green as well.
Yes. Well, Mr. Chief Executive, could we talk to him too?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and Mr. Henderson. So Lisa's right, we do work hand-in-hand, close together. A big part of, as a support agency, one of the things we are working on, in addition to the land transfer, are the actual pole barns. There's five pole barns located on the site, and they are EPA property, so we're also looking on, looking at transferring that property to Butte Silver Bow, and I think, I think Mr. Sessell is gonna, and I might have jumped the gun in saying that, but I know he was gonna bring that in front of the commissioners at some point. Also, I just wanted to jump back a little bit to how EPA and how we view the risk management that's being done on the Montana Pole site, and how I'd like to relate that is, excuse me, is an example of Copper Mountain. You know, I think Butte Silver Bow now is building a Legion baseball field on top of that cap, and that cap has a engineered cover. And, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be kids playing baseball on that cap. Is that protective? Yes, it is. And with that said, some of those engineering tasks that come with building the Legion baseball field require penetrations to the cap. And in my mind, as long as there's sufficient ICs in place, and there's oversight on penetration of caps, and the material and the liner and everything is put back, and the material's handled the way it's supposed to be handled for risk management, the safe is site. So that's just one example of how I view Montana Pole and how the risk management is being achieved by DEQ in cooperation with EPA.
Kenny?
Perhaps you could help me then, the, is the, Montana Pole, if I'm not mistaken, isn't nowhere near like Copper Mountain as far as the dioxins and everything and all the contamination from some of the more serious stuff there is that was used at the Montana Pole? Am I correct?
There are, they are different contaminants.
Right.
They, dioxins are definitely different than metals. One of the things that I can say about dioxins is they're not, the way they're contained in the soils, they're not mobile. So I think that as you design the placement of the dioxins above the groundwater with a cap that Colin describes, you know, when you have a storm event or stormwater hitting the cap and actually running off, and you don't get that infiltration, and you don't have any contact with groundwater, there's no exposure there, and there's no room for the dioxins to be mobile and leave that area.
One more follow-up, excuse me. Commissioner?
Mr. Chief Executive, well, like I said, I appreciate this tonight, but I think it was way, way overdue, many years in fact, and I also think that it's hard to believe how fast this come to fruition all of a sudden with elections and everything else, and it really, really gets to me, because we've been trying to understand this, and it's been very hard for us. And when we get everybody, you know, like last week, we had presentations from Joe and everybody, and told us not to rush now all of a sudden, and now we're under the gun again. So, like I said, I definitely would go along with Commissioner Foley in respect that I would personally want an absolute guarantee from DEQ and EPA, complete guarantee that there will be no after effect from this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
No further questions? Thank you for coming, and we look forward to additional updates as cleanup progresses, and maybe when that five-year review comes out in June, you could share it with us.
And we might consider also looking at, once we get a final design together, a presentation of the commissioners. Would that be something that would be desired?
Yeah, very much so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us into Section 2 of the consent agenda. Can I get a call for segregations? Commissioner Palmer?
Chief Executive, I'd like to segregate A1, the Committee of the Whole Meeting Report, Section 116-91, and B, number 13, 16-110.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Go jotting down, okay. I would like to segregate also out of the committee, the whole report, Section 916-69.
Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, I'd like to segregate number 4, 16-101, and, and, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Perdue Dolan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'd like to segregate Section, or A, number 2 Judiciary Committee Report, Section 3, Resolution 16-8, B, Communication, number 27, 16-124.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'd like to segregate Communication, number 15, 16-112, and number 19, 16-116.
Any further? Seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
See if I can get this straight. I would move to approve consent agenda, that's Section 2, A1 through 5, with the exception of the Committee of the Whole Report, we want to take out Section 1, 16-91, and Section 9, 16-69, and also, out of A, Item 2 Judiciary Committee Report, we want to segregate Section 3, Resolution 16-8, and then in Communications, B, 1 through 27, we want to segregate Item 4, 16-101, Item 13, 16-110, Item 15, 16-112, 19, 16-116, and 27, 16-124.
Second. Commissioner Henderson on the question?
Mr. Chief Executive, I did have one more, if it's too late. Okay. 27, 16-124?
That one has already been segregated.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So seeing none further, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll take them in order, so Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Under Committee of the Whole, Section 1, Communication 16-91, this was the presentation from last week on the Restore Our Creek Coalition, and I'm segregating at this time just to have Mr. Martin Hesmark come before us. He's the Assistant Regional Director of the EPA out of Denver, and I just want to introduce him so he can make a quick comment on this.
Very good, Mr. Hesmark, welcome to Butte.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, Madam Chair, and Council of Commissioners. My name is Martin Hesmark. I am the Assistant Regional Administrator for Ecosystems Protection and Remediation out of Denver. In short, that's Superfund, Emergency Response, Brownfields, Water Quality Standards, and Environmental Impact Statements for the six states that comprise Region 8. That's Montana, the Dakotas, Wyoming, Colorado, and Utah. I'm here today as the leader for the EPA Region 8 Negotiation Team for the Consent Decree for Butte Silver Bow Priority Soils Operable Unit. I thank you again for the opportunity to introduce myself and give you a little interaction with me, and if I may, offer some brief remarks.
Very much so.
Thank you. EPA has been in Butte for a long time, and frankly, we've done a lot of work in conjunction with the county, in conjunction with the state of Montana. More work remains to be done. We learn as we go, and yet, more needs to be done. As we approach this, we are very well aware of the thoughts and concerns of the community, the commission, and the state of Montana. We have the benefit of working with Butte Silver Bow County directly in these negotiations, in addition to working with the state of Montana, both at the Department of Environmental Quality and with the Natural Resource Damage Program. We're all very aware of the community's concerns. You know, as I, I've been here a number of times, I was here as a private citizen, and it's, I think, important for me to let you know that what Butte is, is impressive. What Butte has done for this country is impressive. What remains to be done is also important, and we are very concerned about that, and consider that a number-one priority for us. There will be a time when there's formal public comment on any sort of a consent decree that we come to, but in the meantime, we are open to public concerns, receipt of your concerns, and we are actually working with the parties in the, at the negotiation table to think about how to work with the community informally while we're in these discussions. And I'm optimistic that we'll get something in front of the community sooner rather than later, another installment, potentially. And then we will continue in parallel to work through all of the issues that we all know are in front of us. I think it's also important for you to recognize and for me to relay that many of the issues that we are discussing are addressed in documents that are already in the public domain. Documents that were developed by Atlantic Ridgefield, reviewed by the state and EPA, are on the docket at CTEC, and those are the discussions that are formulating a lot of the discussion, or those are the documents that are formulating a lot of the discussion around the table.
No.
So it's, I think that's important for you to know. The issues we're aware of are the issues that the community has presented, and are the issues that are- the issues that are talked about in those documents. Having said that, I guess one of the last things that I'd like to offer here is that I can be available to you into the future. We've been here a long time, we're trying to wrap things up, but we're not going away. If you have questions and concerns, you need to let me know. You can find me, I am not going away. So, I think that's, that, that's it for me, with the exception of one other thing. You know, our obligation and commitment is to ensure that the remedy that is implemented is protective. That obligation doesn't go away. That obligation is a commitment forever. So, thank you again, Chief, Mr. Chief Executive, Madam Chair, Council of Commissioners.
Thank you for the statement and thank you for your participation in the process and we look forward to, to having you back as we, we progress and, and have a more thorough discussion on the public record. I would point out that while commission members might have questions for Mr. Hesmark tonight, it's not appropriate, given the significance of this in the public right now and that it was not specifically put on the agenda as an item, we don't want to, we don't want to spring anything on anybody here and so I, I would just thank Mr. Hesmark for taking additional time out of an already long day to come up here and introduce himself and make himself available in the future, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Martin. Next up, I believe, is Commissioner Palmer again? Yeah, Commissioner Palmer?
Mr. Chief Executive, this time, since the presentation was held, I'll move that we place Communication 16-91 on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to note and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Commissioner Shaw?
Just for the record, that, I did place it on file and that was the recommend, you just went back to the original recommendation. Thank you. Section 9, Communication number 16-69, Patsy Coats, Property Specialist, Butte Silver Bow Land Records Office, requesting Council of Commissioners concur with the request to hold a bid opening on March 16th regarding the title and lien search of the 2016 tax deed process and also in your ray, you asked that we accept a low bidder, so that's, that's the key that we're, I'm going to ask Patsy to please give us her recommendation and we will take that into consideration.
Chief Executive, Mr. Vincent and Commissioners, if you could please award the low bid to Montana Abstract for $200 per parcel for we can move forward with the delinquent tax deed process.
I would move to approve the request from Patsy Coats, our Property Specialist, to accept the bid from Montana Abstract for $200 per parcel.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept?
And to place on file.
And to place on file.
Yep.
Thank you.
amended second. Accept and place on file. Anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along here, Commissioner Purdue Dolan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I segregated Judiciary Committee Report, Section 3, Resolution 16-8. I just had a quick question with regard to the ballot amendment or the official ballot question, page 5, line number 6, it says Montana-
Point of order, Commissioner Purdue Dolan, this is actually not on the consent agenda for action tonight, so it's actually on the, the, the amended version is on the agenda under Section 4, so that would be the appropriate time to, to discuss.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good. Moving along, we have, so given that there was a segregation, though, I think we need a, a motion and so maybe we, we withdraw the segregation.
So I'll withdraw the segregation of Judiciary Committee Meeting Report. Move to amend it to final reading.
Okay, we need a second on that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and amend. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication 16-01, Rod Warrenstrom, Master Electrician Shop, owner of Arc Electric, 3523 Oregon Avenue, requesting Council of Commissioners address the issue of Butte Silver Bow employees competing against local electrical contractors. Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, the reason I segregated this, I, I, I just, I haven't been able to find out what the problem was here. Mr. Schultz, please.
Mr. Schultz, I know he's got two of our three electricians under his direction, so we'll call on Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Henderson, the, we, we employ three electricians at Butte Silver Bow, two are masters electricians and one is a journeyman and those, the, one of the electricians, one of the masters, works for the planning department and he primarily issues electrical permits and does inspections. The other two do a lot of maintenance and, and other work in all of the county facilities. We, we became aware through our union negotiations with the IBEW here in the last few months that some of the work that our men do on our own facilities actually requires that, excuse me, actually requires that a permit be pulled. I'm going to do Marco Rubio here. Requires that a permit be pulled. Well, we cannot pull a permit unless we are also licensed as a general contractor in the state of Montana. So we are going to fill out the paperwork and get that license, but only for the purpose of being able to continue to do the work on our own facilities with our own electricians that we've done for decades. So this is simply a way to get right with the law. We have no intention, I don't know, Mr. Warrenstrom hasn't spoken with me, we have no intention of doing any work outside of facilities owned by Butte Silver Bow. This will be just perpetuating the things we've always done.
Mr. Chief Executive, thanks, Dave. I appreciate that, because I, I was just a little confused on it because I didn't think we were going out doing any, any other work, just on our own billings, you know, that, that they have done for, like you said, decades.
Yes, sir, that's correct. You know, the, the hoax, Arc maybe had some idea that we were going to be competing in the private sector for work, of course, we're not doing that.
Okay, thank you. With that in mind, I'd concur and like to place 16-101 on file.
You're going to keep the recommendation to send to the public?
Yeah. So you're going to stay with the recommendation to refer to the Public Works Committee, not place it on file?
Right.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to refer to Public Works Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication 16-110, R. Edward Bandarob, Philly Neighborhood Community Coalition, requesting Council of Commissioners to establish rules and procedures to call for, authorize and recognize advisory community councils. Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This communication, the recommendation was to note and place on file. This time, I'd like to make a, a motion to change that to refer it to Judiciary Committee so that we can come up with a solution to this and I think there is a simple one that we can do.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to refer to Judiciary Committee. Is there anything on the question? On the question, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I, I guess my question is, is this has already been referred to judiciary at some point in the last couple of years and, and voted on, so how do we vote on it again? I, I think we've addressed this issue one time before, at least one time. Mr. Bandarob, the author of the letter, has asked to speak, so I would like him to ask his question.
Thank you, R. Edward Bandarob, 2601 Grand Avenue. The issue that was voted on before was neighborhood councils and it was clarified by the attorney that this, that the charter does not address neighborhood councils. The charter addresses community councils, which are a completely different animal. Therefore, I really don't believe you have voted on it previously. Thank you.
Anything else on the question? Commissioner Hen-
Attorney. No.
Welcome to the hot seat.
I mean, I guess if there's a, a difference between the two committees, it would be a new issue and you could definitely look at it again without having knowledge of a lot of what this is about, I guess my best answer is I don't know.
Okay, fair enough. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, and Kelly, I totally concur with that and I think if we send it to judiciary, we will have, Eileen will be there, she's intimately involved and, and actually wrote an opinion on this about a year ago in April of last year, so I think it's appropriate to do that and I would just ask that we indulge them one more time. Commissioner Morgan?
Anything else on the question? Commissioner Henderson?
No.
Oh, oh, okay.
My finger.
This, the motion is to refer to judiciary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Can we, why don't we do a roll call on this, just to make sure we know what the tally is here, so please cast your votes. All votes?
Are you ready?
All votes in? Can you please record?
Six ye, three nay.
Okay, motion passes to judiciary. Communication 16-112, Jeffrey L. Miller, Silver Bow Fire Services, requesting council to concur with request to apply for FEMA assistance to firefighters grant under the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response category. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I see Mr. Miller's in the audience, so I can probably ask him this question now, but you know me, one of the concerns that I have with asking for permission for a grant is I like to see the numbers. I like to see the matching portion that you'll be asking this body to, to eventually approve. Also with this communication is there's the question, after we hire these individuals, if we get the grant, do we keep them on? And obviously, hopefully, the answer is yes at that point, but then it's our job to try to find the funding and that can be done as long as we're given enough time and hopefully able to do it. So, with that being said, do you have funding resources available or how are we going to manage that?
Jeff?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Morgan, the, the long and the short of this answer, and I know it's been a long night and you've got a lot more business ahead of you, but the, the difference with this grant cycle compared to the last is there, there is no, there is no matching requirement for this grant. The period of performance for the new grants is two years. There's also no requirement to keep the firefighters if we were successful to get the grant. You, you don't have to keep them after the two-year period of performance, but obviously the reason we're asking to apply for the grant is, is we're requesting four firefighters, one for each of the four shifts, to increase the numbers of on-duty firefighters. The primary reason that we always ask for this grant is to increase the number of firefighters to move us closer to the NFPA 1710 standard. And just a real quick review of what the NFPA 1710 standard is, you try to achieve the standard of getting four, four-person engine companies within four minutes of the first alarm to a fire. Every, every standard looks at the, the initial minutes of a fire to get as many firefighters on scene within that first few minutes of a fire. That's when you can do the most good in performing rescues and, and knocking down the fire initially, so that's what the standard is. Even with adding four firefighters, we're not ever going to get close to the 1710 standard. So if we were to be a successful grant applicant, we would hope to keep those four firefighters, but it's probably not realistic that the funding's there within our current budgeting to be able to do that. So if we got them, we'd, we'd hope that we could meet in the middle and try and keep them, but we realized fully that we probably wouldn't be able to do that, so we'd try and fit them in through attrition and retirements and hope that something good happened with the taxpayers in the meantime, so that's the truthful answer.
Follow-up, Commissioner Morgan?
So, Mr. Miller, would the, would those four firemen be hired on a contract basis rather than just a regular full-time employee so that we don't have the regular contract of employment that we have with other employees for the term of the grant?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Morgan, they'd be, the grant provides you with the full, the full wages and benefits for the full two years, so they'd be hired as full-time employees with the knowledge that they could potentially lose their job in the two, in the two-year period if the grant funding ran out and there wasn't a way to assume those, those positions through retirements or attrition if the funding didn't become available to pick them up after that period of performance.
And I, I'd add on this and you might want to address this, you kind of, Jeff kind of touched on it, but the timing is actually pretty good on this for succession planning, knowing that this is a two-year grant and there's going to be some retirements coming across the, the period of time, it actually allows us at no cost to the taxpayers to get some of these firefighters if we're lucky enough to get it, to get in and start getting trained on the ground level before individuals retire and so, like he said, when, when there are retirements, you have trained firefighters that are filling the attrition, not starting as newly tested and appointed firemen.
That's correct. I, I think we are at a period where we're going to probably see some retirements in the next four to five years, I think you're probably going to see at least four or five, maybe some more. And then the other, the other part of that is we've put in for these grants in the last five or six years and we, we have not been successful, so I really don't know what our chances are, but I think it's incumbent upon us to continue to try, so.
Follow-up?
So I would agree with everything that's said. The thing I just want to say is these firefighters, when they apply for the job and accept the job, it needs to be communicated to them at that point that their funding might go out and, and they just need to be aware of that before we get stuck in lawsuits with them as, you know, as far as that goes. So as long as you're aware of that, I'm, I'm happy with it. So at this time, I would make a motion that we concur with Communication 16-112 and place on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to concur and place on file. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Jeff. Communication 16-116, Mike Clegg, Butte Silver Bow Deputy County Attorney, requesting council authorize Butte Silver Bow DUI Court to apply for a grant from the United States Department of Justice. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Along with the previous communication, this is also asking for our approval to apply for a grant and in reading the letter, I did not see where it asked us for a, a matching grant or anything that says that there wasn't one, so I don't, Mr. Clegg, I don't believe is in the audience. Kelly, we're referring to you a lot tonight and you might not have any input on this, but do you know anything about this particular grant?
I don't know about this particular grant. I know that the DUI court primarily runs off of funding from grants and I know their funding goes to various training and then, you know, various awards for the participants and, and items such as that, so I'm going to assume that this funding is for items that they've used in the past with grant money.
Sure. Okay. Very good. Follow-up, Commissioner Morgan?
I thought Dinette was hiding from me and she finally found her. Dinette, do you have any, any information?
Chief Executive, Commissioner Morgan, it is, just as Kelly had stated, it's a similar grant than what they have requested in the past. Some money comes from the state of Montana, that, so they operate with two different grants if they're successful and some is state money and some is federal money. Most of the matching is already in place, it's services that the county attorney's offer, office offers to the program. It's services that the county attorney's offer, office offers to the program, as well as the clerks that within the Judge Williams and Judge Pez Dark's court system. And so that's kind of how the matching takes place.
Good enough.
So, so at the end of the day, there's matching available and you're aware of it?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I would make a motion that we concur with communication sixteen dash one one six and place on file.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to concur with communication sixteen one sixteen and place on file. Anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication sixteen dash one two four, Chief Executive requesting counsel of commissioners concur with and authorize to grant $1 million from the Hard Rock Development Assistance Program to Burt Mooney Airport Authority to assist with construction expenses. Commissioner Purdue Dolan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I have a question with regard to this authorization of a million dollars. And my question is about the Burt Mooney Airport being on the Essential Air Service list. And I don't know who, oh. Hi. With regard to that fact, because the Burt Mooney Airport is on the Essential Air Service list, when I worked in the federal government, it was always a concern, any smaller airport being on the EAS. Every eastern senator was so eager to shut down an airport on the EAS at any given moment, and that was always a concern. So the fact that we are getting ready to redo our airport terminal and put a million dollars of taxpayer money into that, are you concerned about the Burt Mooney Airport being on the EAS?
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Purdue Dolan, and I, I think you have, this is a, please, please for the record, identify yourself, Pam.
My name's Pam Chamberlain.
I think she can answer your question, but Pam, given that you are here, I think it would be nice if, maybe after you address Commissioner Purdue Dolan, if you want to just talk a little bit about the, the project.
Absolutely. And I think the Essential Air Service is a big concern for people who may not thoroughly understand that, and I don't mean that offensively, but, so we are on a contract with the Essential Air Service. And we feel that gives us a leg up from the other airports, because most of the airports in the state do not have long-term commitments and contracts from airlines. Most of those are on a month-to-month contract with them. So we feel it's a benefit to be on the EAS, where we have a long-term, two-year commitment. Does that answer your question?
But at the same time, i- is that not though a concern? It, it does give you federal monies and a leg up and, but, but doesn't it give you concern or pause that it can be shut down at any, at any turn and maybe with the change of administrations possibly, that it, it could be a concern? Does it give you any, any pause at all? That, that's just my concern.
Sure.
Knowing that that's always in the back of the mind.
Okay. Under the Essential Air Service, the airport does not receive any federal funds. The airline receives the funds. So the airport does not receive any funds. Also in that contract, there is a stipulation that if the airline were to pull out, that they would have to be replaced with an equal carrier of equal value. And the chief executive would, and the community would make that decision. So they do, they can pull out at any time, but they have to have an airline there that is comparable to the service we're receiving now. And the community and the chief executive has to approve that carrier.
Very good. Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, the other day, we had a, a meeting on this that was called and, and Pam was there with, with Pat from the airport and the chief executive and Mr. Palmer and, and Karen Burns was there and myself. And Pat explained stuff to us, so did Pam. And one great thing I've seen from this is, this airport was built, I think he said fifty-two, and of course, you know that when you go out there and wait in line and you're out the door. So that was, I thought it would be a great economic boost, and I, I think this million dollars is well spent from the Hard Rock Fund for something like this, for us to have an airport that the federal government is, is chipping in fourteen point some million, was it Pam?
Yes, over several years, that's the contribution. And we pay for that with our entitlements that we receive from them.
Right. And, and so I think that first impression, people coming in or going out, that airport would be just a real plus. And I think it's a, I, I think it's a great idea, so I, I just wanted to tell everybody my view.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the project?
We, we need a motion to move forward unless we want, it is your district, Commissioner Henderson.
Does she pull it? Or do I do it?
Well, on sixteen dash one two four, I make a recommendation then to concur and place on file.
We have a motion in a second to concur and place on file. Is there anything further on the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we sure look forward to seeing the project progress.
It'll be a great benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into section three, ordinances and resolutions referred to judiciary, please take note of resolutions sixteen dash one two, sixteen dash one three, and sixteen dash one four. We have section four, ordinances and resolutions for final reading. Number one, clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Bill sixteen three, ordinance number sixteen three, an ordinance amending chapter two point seven two of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled Small Business Incubator Boards, and replacing the title with the name Business Development Center Advisory Board and amending sections two point seven two zero one zero, two point seven two zero two zero, two point seven two zero three zero, two point seven two zero four zero, two point seven two zero five zero, two point seven two zero eight zero, two point seven two one one zero, and deleting two point seven two zero six zero, two point seven two zero seven zero, and two point two zero nine zero, and providing for an effective date herein.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place council bill number one six dash three and ordinance number one six dash three on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is a roll call vote, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Eight yea, one nay.
Ordinance passes. Resolution number sixteen dash eight. Clerk, can you please read the title?
Resolution number sixteen dash eight, a resolution directing the election administrator to put the question of approving a general obligation bond issued not to exceed the amount of $7,200,000 for a term of twenty years for the construction of the Butte Silver Bow Aquatics and Recreation Complex and approving an amount up to $350,000 to be levied annually for the operation, management, and maintenance of the aquatics and recreation complex on the ballot for voter approval at the general ballot election to be held on Tuesday, June seventh, 2016, and providing for an effective date herein.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I moved, at this time, I moved to place council resolution sixteen dash eight on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the question. This is the appropriate time for Commissioner Purdue Dolan to ask her a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I appreciate that. Apologize for the miscommunication earlier. My, my quick question was about the ballot question. It's on page five and line number six. It says, Montana be authorized to levy an annual, and this was the redlined copy, an annual tax amount not up, not to. And the word tax was redlined out. And I was just wondering why that word tax was redlined out. I felt that the, the voters should be given the most amount of information possible, especially when the amount of money levied for twenty years, $350,000 for the operation, management, and maintenance of this aquatic and recreation complex will be voted on for them and to them, in addition to the $7.2 million for the creation of this aquatic complex. The levy and this annual tax, I, I didn't feel this three-letter word should be li- redlined out. So I just wanted to find out why this three-letter word was taken out of the, the official ballot.
Okay. You've got Parkland Recreation Director JP Gallagher, as well as Finance and Budget Director, Danette Gleason here to answer that question.
Commissioner Benson, Commissioner Purdue Dolan, one of the things that we looked at as we were going through the language, we want to make sure that the consistency of it, because levy and tax are essentially the same language. We were eliminating a lot of unnecessary verbiage that was in there. You know, I can let Danette speak to it a little more clearly, but I think that was the rationale why we did that.
Danette?
Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioner Purdue Dolan, that's exactly right. We were trying to read through and try to redline some duplication of words that we were using throughout, plus trying to match the heading of the resolution with some of the ballot language. The other item was that at certain times, we will not be levying an additional tax for the $350,000, because we have a cap. We have thirty-nine meals left on the table that we can use to fluctuate the budget with. So it's more of a levy that we'll be doing than a tax most of the time because of that difference that we have available in our cap.
Okay.
Does that help you?
So I, I'm just, just to be clear, JP just said the levy and the tax are the same word, so they were, you were getting the same verbiage out, and you're saying that they're not?
No, they're, they're exactly right. They mean they are similar, but we feel by saying levy and tax again, we're duplicating. And so when people see that, that tax again, that we may not, we're not going to be necessarily adding tax for the operating costs related association, associated with the pool. It just depends how the budget falls out. And so we chose the word, we took the word levy instead of the word tax. I'm sorry. I wasn't clear on that at first.
Thank you.
On the question, Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, I guess I'd like to see this go before the voters and see what, what they, what they select to do. I do have several questions still. I know we can't get them all out tonight and answer them and, and, because it'd be a while. But I did have, you know, some serious questions, but I don't think it would hold up the selection for the people to make their choice if they would like to pay this amount for this many years and so on and so forth. So it was, some of my questions were the concessions, which I've never been, you know, informed exactly what's going on with the concessions, because I had read a previous email from the previous Parkland Rec. where the, the final was due and, and perhaps Danette could explain that, but the final was due on the, on the contract with the concessions and that to the Carousel. And so I don't know, I never did find out if we do have that or not, if we have the concessions. On the final draft, it said we were going to get five percent from them, and then they're going with their concessions, which they have to. That's how they're going to operate and start, but I didn't know what the pool was doing. So we can get them questions answered down the road. JP, you can help me. And I'll give you some questions, but I, I would like to see it get out to the voters and, and let them make the decision, because this is a, this is a lot of weight on top of the commissioners here and, and so to make a decision. So let the voters do that.
Mr. Gallagher?
Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioner Henderson, with clarification on, on the concessions, there, there was a MOU with the Carousel stipulating that there would be five percent that was given to the, to Butte Silver Bow with shared concessions. As it's gone forward and, and things have changed a little bit, because the project of Carousel has gone forward and they're, they're kind of a standalone facility and going forward as a standalone facility. There's some language within the, within that that will need to be changed, just because it, it doesn't match with the project and where it's going right now is, is going. So in speaking with the Carousel Group, they have a standalone concession stand. We will have a standalone concession stand as well. So we need to renegotiate what that language will be, because there will be no shared concessions per se in there. There is language in there that we want to keep, where we will be doing tickets and things like that together, where possibly, you know, somebody would purchase a ticket that would allow access to the Carousel and allow access to the pool and stuff, and how that would, would work out. But as far as the concessions and other language goes, we will have to sit down and work with them, because the language that's within that MOU really does not fit in what the project is currently between the pool and with, with the Carousel. And I've, I've had those conversations, sat in the Carousel Board in their meetings, and I'm going again this, this Friday, but I, I think they're, that they understand that they'll be running their own concession stand and we'll probably be running our own concession stand.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. That's okay. We're a little lefty, you should be looking leftwards than how much lefties are. Okay, well, first of all, I just, JP, I want to thank you for giving us this breakdown. I, I know we probably saw this ages ago and, but, you know, now that we are talking about possibly having a basic pool, possibly having it separated from the amenities, I, I have a lot of people asking me, how do we justify the $7.2 million? I really appreciate this. I do believe this is a taxpayers, or voters, not just taxpayers, that the voters decide this. And I would like to see this also public, publicly made available to the press and to the other media, just so we can say that our citizens are educated as to what they are really voting for. So I, thank you for this. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Shaw? Commissioner Anderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, the reason I had asked that JP was, I, I still think a big factor in the swimming pool to help balance out the needs for later expenses and so on and so forth, not to make money, that's not what we're there for. But to help with the expenses and such, that, that the concession was a big part of that, because in talking to other swimming pool functions, they all say the same thing. They talk about, it's all about the concessions. And when you're talking to modest $50,000, that you were just kind of lowballing, I mean, of kids that are coming in at three to five dollars with the dolls. So that wasn't very much for a pool this, of this magnitude and such. So I just thought the concessions somewhere down the line, if you projected that then, once you know on this clarification, the MOU, then it would sure help in the public knowing when they're voting for this too. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'd like to just call a point. I'd like to just call a point of order on this just because concessions don't have anything to do with the resolution that's before us. So for us to even going, go into a discussion with it, I think we're out of line. So point of order, call for the question.
So to call for the question, we have to take a motion and there's a second to call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is just the call for the question. Passes, and so that forces us to take a vote, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Eight aye, one nay.
Okay, resolution passes.
Thank you JP.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Council Resolution 16-9, clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 16-9, a resolution granting conditional approval of the final plat of the Pizza Ranch Minor Subdivision Expedited Review of the City and County of Butte Silver Bow State of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Resolution Number 16-9 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Nine aye, zero nay.
Resolution passes. Resolution 16-10, Tracy, can you please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 16-10, a resolution amending the budget during the fiscal year after conducting a public hearing at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Council of Commissioners in accordance with Section 7-6-04006 MCA, appropriating unanticipated grant revenue to the Butte Silver Bow Public Archives from the federal government, Department of Interior, National Park System for the purpose of creating an ethnic atlas and creating three national landmark property nominations and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
I move to place Council Resolution Number 16-10 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, please record.
Nine aye, zero nay.
Resolution passes. And finally, clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 16-11, a resolution approving growth policy amendment number 30 to approve changes to the Butte Silver Bow County Growth Policy Land Use Map of the 1987 Butte Silver Bow Master Plan, incorporating by reference the changes to the map and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
I move to place Council Resolution Number 16-11 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Seeing nothing on the question, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Nine aye, zero nay.
Resolution passes. Is there any public comment on matters that were not on tonight's agenda? Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move into the, taking note of the calendar of other meetings and events. Does anyone have anything to add?
Happy St. Erhohos Day.
Happy St. Erhohos Day. So with that, oh, I forgot. Friday, you guys all received the email that I sent out with the link to the survey. That's to, to try and align our priorities together. We're taking a, an additional step forward in, in coming up with a strategic plan that identifies goals and priorities. We want to be aligned with, with the legislative branch, so please get those in by Friday for them to do us some good. I appreciate it. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?